All right, looks like we're on. Greetings, it's June 17th, it's 1:01 PM and we'll open the meeting for the regular Board of Commissioners meeting for Fire District 21 and I'll start with roll call, I'm Bruce Ansel.
Rich Boshman.
John Proffer.
John Fisher.
Kimberly McMurray.
Jason Vanerven.
We have other guests here today. Heather Logan's here, Scott Brown's here, Chris Fawcett and Chief Ward. Excellent. All right. We have Volunteer Pension Board meeting minutes for May 20th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
No move.
Any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Regular Board of Commissioners meeting consent agenda. I was not here last meeting, it sounds like we had a motion and a second and then we got distracted somewhere and never had a vote, so I'm assuming everyone that was there had an opportunity to review and discuss, so I'll, I guess, reentertain the motion. Scott was the original motion maker for that agenda. And Kimberly seconded it, if you guys don't have any issues with that, I'll ask, is there any further discussion or concerns about what we're about to do here? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda from the May 20th meeting? All right, unanimous, now we've got the consent agenda for today, June 17th, which includes the May 20th meeting minutes, the staff reports, the financials, and I'll read those numbers in. May's revenue was $1,194,840.71 and the June expenditures were $784,539.11. The direct deposit payroll, $332,452.13. Payroll taxes, $70,127.94. Benefits voucher, $216,152.16. Monthly expenditure voucher, $115,680.17. And capital projects apparatus, $50,126.71. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Comments, concerns? Okay, hearing and seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Commissioner meeting report. Do you want to tell us about dispatch at all, John?
I just got out of a meeting, we had a meeting here earlier and a few county council people or city council people and the London City Mayor are currently visiting dispatch centers today. So that's kind of what, it's ongoing. I sent you the minutes of what we're talking about and the task ball. So if you have any questions, feel free, but it's ongoing and we need to get it in two weeks.
Do you sense that we're moving any closer to people understanding two separate entities, or are they still trying to marry them?
Basically, it's my understanding just with the meetings that I've been involved with, the people that are talking really don't understand how dispatch works, that's why they're visiting the centers today. They have a lot of talk about times and transfer times from when you call 911, it actually go into the WACOM Center and WACOM has to make the evaluation if it's on the fireside, then it gets transferred to what's called Prospect, which is actually the fire dispatch center. So they want to look at transfer times, the actual time it takes to start CPR on critical calls, this, that, and the other, so there's a big big push to, for them to get the knowledge to see if there is any benefit to join the dispatch centers, so.
Do the dispatchers have a preference?
They, yeah, they do. They, they, there's been, there's been two consulting firms that have come out since 2015, there was a report, then 2018, there was another report. And both of them said that there's no financial impacts that would be of great benefit to either entity if they combined services. They also said that there's nothing really wrong with the way the services are ran now, but some people think that dispatch needs to be combined. They think that there might be some benefits to doing this due to times of transfer of those calls. There's a big push right now to get them under the same building. But you have to understand, there's also two different organizations, unions and things like that, pay scales that would all have to be worked out, we're talking 24 dispatchers on the police side and what, 14 or 15 on the fireside? So trying to get all those people under one umbrella. There, there's a reason things were split 99, is that's because the fireside didn't get the, didn't get the service that needed. And now we're 2021 and we're pretty happy. But, you know, we want to do due diligence and see if we are doing the correct thing if we do decide to combine the service.
Is there a timeline as to when they might want to make a decision?
The London City Mayor is pushing for September 30th.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? So then, I, did anyone else have any meetings? So the, the chief and I had a couple together, one was with Commissioner Land and I think we have tentatively agreed to meet at least once a month and continue our relationship, right now, everything is moving in a positive direction. I, I think we both have, have the same ideas and mission for where we want to go with the RFA and the ILA, but obviously, all of this is going to be dependent on the levy lift lifts in both districts. And it might be premature to get together and start making up new contracts and agreements if we don't know if we have the funding to move forward, so we will stay in touch and communicate as needed, as necessary, and put off any movement forward on, on those two issues until after August, hopefully, we won't have to wait till November. Plus then, you know, we're gearing up, I think everyone, well, the two positions here, both Kimberly and Johns are unopposed, correct? So we'll just pay for an expensive election for something that we already know the outcome to. And for District 4, they've got an interesting quirk in their positions, they've, they've appointed a new person. And he's also running for a vacant position, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason? And then Commissioner Andrews is not running, but Mark is running for Commissioner Andrews' position starting in January, so there, in November, there's going to be this weird, Mark will be out, right? He's appointed till November election. He's not running for a vacant position, he's running for Harry's position, which is occupied, so basically, the chair of their board will, will have to step out until January 1, when he takes over Harry's position and we can't make this stuff up, it's just.
I'd need a, I need a tack board with like string and pictures to make it all.
Interestingly, again, with them, none of the positions are contested, so we know who is going to be there. They had a third position that no one ran for, so come December or January, they're going to have to, I guess, in January, they'll, they'll move to appoint the vacant position, so. Such a popular office to hold, you know? Anyway, so that was that meeting, do you have, is there anything else you'd add for that meeting, Chief?
No.
All right, and then we had the opportunity to meet with the City of Blaine, we met with the city manager, the mayor and the mayor pro tem just to give them a heads up on our levy lid lift since they have a fair number of our customers in their city. And just wanted to get some feedback from them and I believe the chief has a meeting in front of the whole city council on the 28th?
Yes.
So he can answer any of their questions, I thought the meeting was very positive. We learned a few little tidbits from them. And I think it was their recommendation that we speak to the whole council, there was talk of if the council is in favor of it, even talking about a resolution in support of the levy, which would be pretty cool. Not sure if we're going to get that traction or not, but it, it was mentioned by both the mayor and the city manager. So. Anything else to add to that, Chief?
No, I, I agree, it was a positive meeting and, yeah, I look forward to the 28th and addressing the council and seeing if they have any questions or concerns.
And then today at 2 o'clock, it's the Birch Bay Chamber, correct?
Correct.
I'm hoping I can get home in time to get on to that one with you. Is there an invite for that, are, are you, they're hosting.
Correct.
Have to figure out where that invite is, anyway. All right, legal issues, I haven't heard or seen any, except we'll have a resolution for the November levy lid lift in case August isn't successful. We're hoping we won't need that. Local 106, Scott.
Good afternoon, thank you. Yeah, nothing too crazy to report, we're just kind of waiting for the levy lid lift stuff to kick off, we got signs being made up and some of the old ones being relabeled because of the new voting changes, so we're happy to help with that and get those signs out. Other than that, that's the biggest thing is the levy lid and everyone seems to kind of be breathing a sigh of relief that talks with D4 back on and seem to be positive, so. Thank you.
Great. All right, so that brings us to our unfinished business, the Levy Lid Lift Resolution 2021-04 has to be filed on August 3rd, which is the day of the election, or by August 3rd, I'm sorry. So we actually won't know the outcome of the election, so we have to file this resolution applying for the ballot in November, but can withdraw it if our issue passes on August 3rd, so it's weird that the timelines are such that you're required to file before you know the outcome, but. I'm, I'm sure it's just a unique situation for us, so. So I will need a motion to approve that resolution, it's basically the same resolution that we passed for the August election, with the exception of some date changes on it, so is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, unanimous. And then a facilities update.
Actually, Commissioner Ansel, can we give Chris Fawcett and Heather Logan a chance to kind of update us on what's going on on the comm side of the Levy Lid Lift?
Yep. Sorry, yes, thank you for being here and my apologies for not opening up the mic.
No problem, hello everybody, it's good to see you. We just wanted to make sure you knew that your team is working really hard on making sure that your property owners, your businesses and residents are, are having, are getting a chance to get information to learn about the measure that's going to be in front of them, so. Just a quick recap of some of the things that we have done and some of the things that are upcoming, Commissioner Ansel mentioned a few meetings that are upcoming, but we've developed a plan and a timeline that, you know, takes us from actually about a month ago through the August election date, where we've identified the different materials that we need, opportunities to get in front of folks, which we still would really like to hear from you, you guys know your community groups and whatnot the most, but we plug in those, we've got some public meeting schedules, whatnot, but we have a nice Excel spreadsheet plan that is guiding us and is a living document. We've developed a number of materials, I think you've all seen the webpage that has basic information and FAQ and contact information. We've printed and developed some information cards, which hopefully you all have or are getting very, very soon, they're sort of five by seven cards that just have some fast facts about what the measure does and contact information and drives people for the website, so we really encourage you to carry those around as you're out and about. And it's a good thing to fall back on and just hand a little takeaway for people and then they can go learn more about the measure on their own time. I think you've, you've received some talking points and we're calling them sort of five fast facts, and then if you have a little bit more time to educate, there's a few more details. If you don't have any of these, please let the chief or any of us know and we'll make sure you get them. We've developed a nice slide deck that the chief is really good at, that he will be using today with the chamber event that walks through the different issue areas around the measure and, and some talking points to accompany it, he's quite good at delivering the information in a really genuine and approachable way, I know that you know that about your chief. We also developed and sent out a June newsletter and then we've got a July one that's in draft that Jenny diligently formats and gets out and that one, the July, the June one sort of introduced the measure and gave the basic information about kind of why it's proposed and what it does and what happens if it's not approved. Again, all of this has to be factual and advocacy, it can't be advocacy based, so we can't say things like you have to have this or you must vote for this. But hopefully, the story itself is compelling enough. The July one will probably be more of a, we always will hit those same messages, but it'll be a little bit, you know, we are out and about and here's kind of what we're hearing, here are the top questions we're getting and sort of answer those. The chief has also, they, there's a reader board that will put some messaging on and then we are working to develop the really important mailer piece, the one mailer that you as a fire district are able to send to all of your residences. And that, we've pretty much got the content and we're working on some of the design. The goal is to have that hit right around the same time that the ballots hit, so people will see it when they're getting their ballot. There's also a video that's kind of underway that we've had some fits and starts with, but it will happen and the thinking there is it'll be like a 30 second piece that we can also share social media, put on websites, people can put in their newsletter that again, gives kind of those five fast facts. So those are all the materials, so if you need anything and you don't have that, please let us know because you should be armed and, and ready to be talking about this. The same with the staff, the firefighters and the district staff should have that, every opportunity you have, I would shove that information card into somebody's hands so that they can can learn more about it, so they're not surprised when it, when the ballot comes and there's something on their ballot that they're not familiar with. Commissioner Ansel mentioned a couple of good meetings already had, the chief also did a buzz pod for Birch Bay, which I think is airing that first week of July. They're going to give us a snippet from it that's related to the Levy Lid Lift and we'll distribute that more broadly. We've got Semiamu scheduled for July, but we really, really need you guys to help us to identify other groups that the chief can get in front of, or really effective also, if you know of groups that have a newsletter that we can just give them prepackaged information, a good example is that semi resident group also has a newsletter and we'll just package a nice message for them that they can include that then drives them to our website, so those existing communication channels are great ways to get more information out, especially because people are used to getting them from a trusted resource. Yes, I see a hand raised. Hi Sean.
You're muted or something?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Is this something that we can put the flyer in, and I know this is weird, but in the valve pack? A little valve pack flyer that comes to everybody's home once a month that has all the advertisements and everything in it, is that something that we can put a leaflet in there?
I think I'd want to ask your attorney, that's not something you've ever done before, I love the idea that that generally, where you can get into trouble is if you do things that you haven't done before. So I think we'd maybe want to check with Richard, do you have the, have you ever done that, or do you have the ability, or do those valve value packs include more information type pieces, or is it really like businesses trying to sell stuff?
It's coupons.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a little, it might raise some eyebrows, I like how you're thinking and I think that creativity, we need a lot of that. And it's not to say that you guys can't do stuff that's a little out of the ordinary, there's this weird PDC push and pull where, you know, in my mind, local jurisdictions should be educating their voters about everything, right, there shouldn't be constraints around that, you should be able to do everything. But they do frown if you start doing a bunch of stuff that you've never done in the past, even if it's fact-based. So, you know, we just want to be cognizant of that and that's in part, right, we have Richard that's always just pulling us back if we get a little too eager. But, so I think that might be a tough one, but things like that are great ideas. Oh, we can't hear you again.
Nope, I can't hear you.
Dang, he has such good ideas.
You've been muted.
Others muted too.
Yeah.
The, the other thing I would say, until we can get him back, is you know, a, a big help that, that all of you on this call can do is you know, there's big group type meetings, but there also are just sort of one-on-one smaller groups, there might be some you know, in, in a neighborhood where two or three people might be interested in learning more information and obviously, the chief can't be everywhere. So that's where I think we're going to lean on you all to just try and provide your folks that you see in your daily lives with that, those quick five things, this is why we're doing it. This is, you know, the situation that we're in, it's going to be on the August ballot, here is the website to learn more about or here's a contact info and then, you know, if that's the limit of the knowledge you have, which is just fine. That gets it started and, and points them in the right direction, but you know, we've got all these materials now that, that, that we want to make sure get out there and the last thing we want to do is on August 3rd, feel like we didn't do every little thing we could to get information into your voters and residences' hands. And obviously, it's great, the union is doing it, they don't, they're not constrained, they can advocate, which is wonderful. And you're very fortunate to have such an active group that is doing what they can, because I think with both those sides doing it, hopefully, most of the folks in your district will, will at least have some basic information.
And one of the things that Chief Ward was trying, he texted me and one of the things he's trying, was trying to get across was can we use like the Herald or the Northern Light or the London Tribune for, for things and we, we are doing, we are using them for like public outreach notifications, which will be coming in July as well, we've got two two Zoom meetings that will have people attending. But once again, I guess I would fall back to what Chris said about, you know, education versus advocacy, we have to kind of run a fine line. You know, if a, say, a labor organization wanted to take buy an ad, that's totally different, but the district can't do that.
Right, or letters to the editor, I mean, we could, we could send information that's factual about, make sure you look for your ballot and this will be on it, but we can't say this is why this is really important for you to vote yes on.
I realize it's early in the outreach period, once the ballots are out and the mailer arrives and everybody knows about it, the answer may be different, but are any of you hearing anything from the public at this time? Mr. Brown from the union, Sean, commissioners, is anybody talking about this?
No, there were a couple articles in London Tribune, I think, that talked about it. But no, it's been quiet.
Well, do let us know if you're hearing things particularly either misinformation or questions that you don't think we have answers to or have in our key messaging, messages. Heather's right, it's pretty early and especially with COVID, there's just people are not going to pay attention, one probably good thing is because your neighboring fire districts are also on the ballot that people often may not even know what fire district they're in, but if they see everybody getting information about it probably very similar messaging, because it's generally about the need for more funding, that can't hurt, you know? And I also think it's helpful to be able to say, you guys aren't alone, you're asking, you know, your neighbors have either that current funding or what you're asking for and you have not asked in a long time. And so, you know, you really do, you're, you're careful when you ask and you really do need this now. Scott?
Oh yeah, just to touch on that, that is the, kind of the consensus and plan from the local is to we're advocating for all of them and the signs are, should be up, be, be finished by the end of the week, it sounds, and then we can start putting them out. And we're going to basically kind of advertise in each department, because the numbers have changed now, can't be fire prop one, but the consensus is to kind of blast all of them at the same, to show that everyone's doing it to, hopefully that'll help out, so.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. So, so let us know how we can help you be out and about and you are the best spokespersons for this, you, you know, you're, you're community leaders and people will look to you, so we just want to make sure you have everything you need to be able to, you know, share the information that you think folks need, so don't hesitate to reach out to us or reach out to the chief and he can connect you with us to make sure you have what you need.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Are you comfortable with these materials and you're ready to? materials and you're ready to hand them out when the moment is right?
The info cards will become though, when you come into signed documents, you'll leave with the info cards today. So they're packaged with your name on them, ready to go. So the, and that, that should make, and the crews already have them, each, each of the three stations in within North Warkham have them. So there, I've got a Chief Ward and I have a bundle in our cars, you know, as we're out, we're, we're leaving them. So they're, they're getting out there, but yours, yours will come today. And yeah, any, anything that we can provide you. You know, even if we need to tailor it, even if we need to tailor it. You know, so you're not, it's too much. Can you, can you, can you whittle it down for us? Well, actually I say we, but actually Chris and Heather will, will whittle it down to a, to a digestible format. They're exceptional at what they do.
And, and it really is easy for us to do that quickly because for the most part, you know, it's the same basic message, just a little bit tailored for the audience. And we spent time getting that. So now it's just repackaging it a little. And if there's new, any new info that comes up, of course we'll deal with it, but it's a very, it's not a heavy ask to do, have us do that. So please don't hesitate.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your time and efforts. And we look forward to a successful August 3rd.
Yeah, it's coming up quickly and, and you know, it is interesting. You wanna be as prepared as you are when all of a sudden everyone starts turning their attention to it. Cause then all of a sudden you're gonna get a lot of questions, but as much as we can do in advance by just so it's not as big a surprise, like if they see an info card in a coffee shop or if they've heard a little bit about it because they were perusing one of their newsletters, then they're not as surprised and that will make it a little easier. We just don't want any confusion. People vote no when there's confusion.
Very good.
Great. Thanks for the time.
Yep. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everyone.
So we'll move on to facilities. Um, Chief, you have an update for us a little bit?
I do. We're, uh, we're having trouble getting bids for painters. So I'm gonna talk to with Richard Davis and find out how many bids do we actually have, have to have. It's not like it's a sealed bid process. Uh, if we show we've worked at it for 30 or 45 days and we get one or two, can we, can we move forward with that? And then as well as um, doing some, I'll call it significant HVAC upgrades at Station 63. Crews out there freezing in the winter and cooking the summer. And it's been that way for 20 plus years. And um, I've said it before, I wanna, you know, we need to make this about the crews and give them the best tools to be able to do their job. And sometimes that's rest or relief from the heat. So we're, uh, we got our third bid today from an HVAC contractor to put, um, what do you call it? Like a mini split system out there at Birch Bay to kind of cool down some of the rooms. Um, so they can, they can retreat from the heat. And that will be coming before you. That's gonna be, it's gonna be a significant amount of money, but it's something we need. It's been needed to be done for years. And um, those are the two big facility updates that I have for you.
So on that subject, I received a call from a concerned citizen in Semiamu who had also spoken with the chief who referred her to me. And um, was um, curious about the condition of Station 62 and why it looks so rundown. And I have uh, taken pictures of that station some time ago and sent them to the chief. There are some things up there that uh, need to be addressed. Painting is one. We've got a, a door that's about half rotting off. I think we've got a stairwell in the back that's probably not safe. Uh, the gutters are growing trees. The parking area and driveways are in dire need of pressure washing. So I, I certainly couldn't argue with her that her concerns were well-founded in that uh, we're trying to get contractors to help us out. I think we have um, a maintenance, uh, lawn maintenance company meeting next week, chief.
Yes, on Tuesday, the 22nd, I'm meeting with Warkham Lawns, who's very generously donated um, time and effort to Station 70, keeping it looking nice.
And so, you know, maybe we can, we can tie into something they have to say, but, but I had this wild and crazy idea and I appreciate that Scott's here because I ran this by him as well as, is, is maybe this would be a nice demonstration to the community of, of our, our efforts to spruce this place up and, and as part of the levy, we intend to park a peak time aid car there and that station's gonna have to be facelifted anyway. And so I'm kind of throwing my name in the hat out there to say, I would be interested in helping coordinate a work party of some sort. And we could call it a barbecue or a hoedown or a, or a whatever, but it would be nice to go in there. And I mean, it's, it, it just looks like nobody's living there and that's because nobody's living there. And it's a, it's a pretty nice community up there. And I think if, if we were kind of setting the example. Um, and maybe if they saw a bunch of us out there digging in the dirt and cleaning things up, they might even stop and be interested in, in why we're doing that. And that's in, in preparation for our successful uh, levy lid lift. So um, it, it might be some good advertising. So uh, if you guys think that's a dumb idea, now's your chance to, to, to tell me to, to give up, but um, I'm willing to do it. I got a pressure washer. I got all kinds of tools that are just sitting around and, and I can find time in between fishing season. So um, but if, if anyone's interested, I'd like to uh, maybe plan this uh, probably for a weekend or something like that. I know that, that it, it might be who has to wait until we hear from the lawn company to see what they say. But I still think we could get out there and, and get some things cleaned up and at least respond to this citizen's concerns and say that, yeah, we're here. We're trying to do the best we can and I'll be the first one to step up and volunteer my time. Maybe we can cook some burgers and dogs or something like that. But uh, anyway. Your thoughts?
If I could, I, I just wanted to um, point out that her, her beef wasn't just with us. It was the entirety of Semiamu and, and she was frustrated with the city and um, she was gonna call, she, she wanted to call the mayor and have a chat about me and call the county and have a chat about me and what I was doing. And, and uh, so she's, she was frustrated with the overall how Semiamu looks today from the time you enter it on the parkway to the time you get to the inn. So we were one, one tiny shred of focus, but I did admit to her that.
And I offered the only thing we have control over is the fire station and, and we'll do our best to try to address that. So.
I think it's a great idea. Count on my husband and I to help. And we have all kinds of yard tools and power washers and he can paint and we have skills.
Yeah, there's, I, I talked with Richard Davis. There's, there's certain um, things that we can't do. It sort of has to be what's known as sort of routine maintenance stuff. So we can't rebuild the stairwell and, you know, remodel the kitchen. And fortunately we had it re-roofed already, but uh, so we will, you know, there will be a, a, a fine line, but yeah, it would, it would be nice to just.
Weeding the flower beds. I mean, there's just lots of things we can do volunteer wise.
Yep. Just trimming and weeding and you know, just cutting the line and, and delineating the flower beds from the lawn or, 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 or whatever it is. So anyway, I will figure out a way to coordinate that. I would say it won't be for probably, well, probably shoot for after the 4th of July. Sometime in there. So.
Hey, could I, if you guys, if and when you do that, I, I suggest taking photos of you doing that work just to have them for um, I never want, it tells a good story about the hard work that you do. And you know, even with limited funds, you step in and do this work, but it would probably just be good for even moving forward on beyond the levy lid lift.
Very good. Thank you.
Can you call it a work party and not a hoedown?
Yes. Absolutely. Be a Semiamu Station 62 spruce up.
Can we uh, get the ladder truck out so we can weed the gutters?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, they're, they're, they're pretty, pretty ways up there, but there's some nice trees growing in there.
No, I think it's a great idea.
All right. Well, uh, stay tuned on that one. We'll get a message out and, and Scott, I know that you, you've said that uh, we might be able to shake the tree a little bit and, and get some members out there. The timing's right. I know it's summertime and people are doing stuff, but there's usually always a handful of people that are willing to come out.
Yep, just uh, we'll figure out a date and then I'll send something out to everyone. So.
Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, new business, law enforcement response. Who's gonna lead this one?
I put it on there, but I'd like to hear what the chief knows about it.
Well, what I, what I know is that um, times are changing. Uh, the Washington State Legislature has placed certain restrictions on law enforcement, starting late mid, uh, the last 3rd of July, roughly around July 20th. That is going to inhibit their response to certain types of emergencies they've handled for years, namely things like welfare checks, uh, response to uh, mentally uh, patients that have potential mental illness type of um, activities going on. Really anything, as it's been described to me by, by multiple people from the sheriff's department, is that anything that does not involve a direct crime happening from one person to another. A physical crime is not, essentially not going to be responded to by law enforcement anymore. The thought, I don't, I don't wanna get into opinions, but the, the thought is that um, the prevailing wisdom is that the badge and uniform of a law enforcement officer automatically escalates the situation, which then causes deadly force to be applied at certain times, or maybe didn't have to be. What's happening right now is that those calls are being passed through to fire and we are, we are essentially picking them up and trying to figure out what, how to deal with these things. It does make it certainly riskier for our crews. There are no clear guidelines that anybody has from anybody I've reached out to. This is all new within the past 30 days. And uh, we're gonna work. I'm, I've asked the sheriff's department to be part of the working group that works with mental health counselors, mental health professionals, sheriff's department or law enforcement, and um, they didn't really have any fire people involved because it didn't seem I guess I just didn't think about it, but um, I've asked to be involved in those discussions. Uh, Chief Hewitt as well is gonna try to get in there. Um, and so let's see if we can come up with a countywide, what are we gonna do about this? Because it's, it's very much a problem and it puts our employees at significant risk. We are, we're asking them to walk into things that A, they have no training for and B, they have no, they have no defenses against if something goes wrong. It sounds hollow, but I, I don't have a plan other than telling people to be safe. And my best advice to our folks that I've talked to is ask the patient to come outside. Have, have prospect call back in, call in the house and tell, tell them, we'll meet you in the front yard. But we're not going in any, you know, if you come up with a situation that's not a clear cut medical call or if it's a, a trauma, you know, the good thing is, is that known, you know, assaults, those kinds of things, law enforcement will still be going. Uh, gunshot wounds, law enforcement's gonna go. So it's not like we're gonna be walking into those. It's the scarier ones where someone calls because they need help and they don't actually tell the truth about what's going on. So right now, the best direction I have for our folks is if it doesn't seem right, have the patient meet you outside. And I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Crawford, I wish I had something better for you. You know, it's you need to buy vests? Do we need to buy helmets? I, I, I don't know. We, we still shouldn't be going in on those kinds of calls, although you know, things are changing and we may be more headed down that road than we have been ever in the past, but there, nobody knows what's, nobody in fire or law enforcement knows how this is gonna play out.
Right. I just wanted to make everybody aware. This starts July 25th. And in the meetings that I had this morning, it looks, fires anticipating 16,000 extra calls per year, just on the data they've seen in the past. So again, I think Jason's idea is if you can't see the patient and they're not willing to come out, common sense tells me I'm not willing to go in. And I don't think that's a bad thing. My deal is if you can see the patient's hands, they're, they're, they're not holding anything or having, you know, a, a mental breakdown of a weapon of some type, then we can go ahead and deal with that. But if they gotta stick, they've got something in their hands that I can't identify, my deal is, is I'm gonna check out. And I just, I wanna, I wanna make sure that the other commissioners are gonna back our firefighters in, in these strange times that we've always had law enforcement. Now that element's just been removed. So I don't, I don't know what anybody's suggestions are, but I'm kinda on board that if I can't see the patient's hands or what they're holding, or if it's dark and they're not willing to come contact us, then they don't need us.
All right. I guess this is one we stay tuned for.
This will be an ongoing discussion.
Yeah, uh, obviously will be some education piece for the, for the crews as to how we as a department are gonna manage it. Hopefully consistently because I don't want one crew thinking that we go in on every call and one crew thinking that we don't go in on every call. So we, we've gotta kind of have a, a, a standard practice that uh, is presented to everyone the same way. So Rich?
Well, I think uh, what the chief suggested is really good advice. If you can't see, especially if it's at night, unless they're disabled and can't make it to the door for some reason, which they could tell you, put the lights on and come out is really good advice. And I would say at any time, if the, the crew is uneasy and doesn't feel safe going in, they should call dispatch and tell law enforcement, we do not feel safe going in this house. And I just can't imagine that law enforcement will not respond to that. Uh, there's no reason to put yourself in jeopardy in that situation. So until something's written, I think uh, this is really good advice that the chief gave. And I would add to that to call law enforcement that they don't feel safe before they go in.
All right. Well, I'm sure we'll hear more about this. Um, and thanks for bringing it to our attention. John. Which brings us to uh, um, almost our next topic. Nothing policies and procedures I see, chief?
Oh, except I do wanna update you that um, every single employee, volunteer and commissioner has completed um, their annual sexual harassment diversity training. Thank you. Um, we got better feedback this year than what we've done in the past. Um, as well as wanted to let you know that um, Mr. Crawford uh, performance evaluations are, are underway for the first time in years.
Well, I thought you were gonna tell me I'm the only one that failed the test.
Yeah, I was starting to get a little sweaty there. That was all right. Uh, correspondence, you saw there's several articles in the papers uh, about our uh, relationship with District Four and the levy, which was good. Um, yeah, so uh, announcements, we've got uh, one really big announcement. Uh, Commissioner Crawford worked his last shift uh, on the 15th or 16th.
Tuesday, yeah.
So congratulations for your 30 years service. Um,
Thank you.
And uh, alls I can say is you're really gonna have a lot more fun now. And all's I can say is you're really going to have a lot more fun now. Welcome, welcome to the retired side.
Well, I'm leaving Sunday, and I'll probably be back sometime after the 4th.
All right, well, be careful out there.
Always.
All right, and then we have a board meeting query for the 17. Oh, it says, no, that's not right, is it? Hang on. It's certainly not 617, I know that. So we're going to be the 15th, right? July 15th.
How are we looking for staffing and blame on the 4th there, Chief?
We're going to staff, we'll staff with four at every station. That's what we do every year.
Okay, because I know they were going to have their fireworks show again this year, so.
They are going to have a fireworks show.
They usually fax men.
But no parade, so.
All right, so the board meeting will be July 15th, which may, that weekend of the 17, 18, might be a potential Station 62 work party. So if we can gear up, maybe then. Everyone good for the 15th?
We're going to try that live altogether in the same room?
See what the governor's proclamation says, but we're actually working on getting some upgrades done to 61, so that we can do that and continue on Zoom, so that the public can attend, or, you know, say, one of you retired guys is out of town, wherever it is you go all the time, you can, you can remote in on Zoom to the meeting a little easier than we had been able to in the past.
Well, let's know here in a couple of weeks where that special spot is.
Sorry to dig.
Yeah, he's, he's got, you're going to have to pull the motorcycle over, though, to be on the Zoom call, okay? All right, next meeting, agenda items, we've got the standing and Chief and Fire Marshal thing that can be put to rest for now. I guess we can continue with the levy lid lift discussion next month. Hopefully, we'll have facilities updated again next month. I will try to get you the name of a painter that we can maybe give a call, and.
Are we looking just at the doors or actual stations?
The doors at this time.
Right now, the doors.
Yep.
Okay, I think until we sort of get through the levy and maybe start thinking about the master plan of what we're going to do with stations. But yeah, we could do some cosmetic touch-up. Like I say, 62 needs a little dab here and there, but anyway. All right, anything else before we close this thing out? Documents signing is going okay, everybody is figuring that out, coming in here.
There'll be stuff for you to pick up when you come in, don't leave without it.
And your levy lid lift information cards are wonderfully done. I understand that we had to reprint them because of the prop one change. Can we send that bill to the county for their?
They would send it right back.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Cost us more in post due to them.
All right, nothing else? Be safe, and Scott, you have anything, or you're just?
Yeah, I just was touching base on a levy, texting what the big local, the plan is to run ads in the newspaper. Just want to let you guys know that, so.
I, I'm, I'm kind of hoping, assuming that, that billboard on I-5 is going to light up for all the, for all the props, maybe? Since everyone's doing it, just get the word out. Cool, all right. I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Is that it?
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thanks, everyone, for your time.